Thank you very much. Welcome to the March 24, 2020. Sorry, we're trying to figure out the mic here. Okay, I'm gonna go anyway. So, welcome to the March 24, 2020 City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect. I guess we have to do that verbally.
Yeah, all right, I'll tell you what, we'll do a quick roll call. So, on the phone, do we have Mr. Hurdman?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Let's do that again. On the phone, do we have Mr. Hurdman?
Yeah.
And do we have Mr. Duffield?
Yeah.
All right, and we have everyone else in person. All right, purpose of meeting right now is going to be to go into closed session, but before we go into closed session, do we have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Harp?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel, discuss Agenda Item 3A, which is the litigation entitled Susan Riddle versus City of Newport Beach.
Thank you very much. So, what we will be doing is recessing into closed session, and we will start the regular meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. I am calling into order the March 24, 2020 regular session. Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right, tonight, I will say the invocation, and let's see, I think we're on Mr. Avery. Mr. Avery, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance?
One moment, Mayor, I just want to note that council members Duffield and Hurdman are present at the meeting telephonically.
All right, thank you very much.
Lord, we ask that you watch over all of our first responders. We ask that you watch over all of the people in healthcare. We ask that you watch over those people who have been infected. We ask that you watch over those people who aren't yet, but that are being exposed. We ask that you watch over the families of those who have died. And we ask that you watch over our community. We ask that you watch over our leadership as we're making difficult decisions day in, day out. That you give us wisdom and guidance, and that you guide us with your hand. We ask that you watch over those people who are in home isolation right now. That you give them peace, that you give them calm. We ask that you watch over those people who have lost their jobs and are facing financial difficulties right now. That their community would rally around them and make sure that they feel seen, that they feel comforted. An overarching, we ask that you watch over literally everyone on this planet right now that is suffering through a pandemic that has epic proportions. Things we ask in my name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we are now at a presentation for the Donate Life, DMV Donate Life California Month. As you might imagine, the DMV representative, who would be otherwise receiving this, is not able to attend tonight. But I do think that this is an item that is worth noting very briefly, and I'm just gonna read through portions of the proclamation. Whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 112,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are required to meet the need in California, and whereas each year there are 18,000 patients in need of volunteer marrow donors, and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Newport Beach, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org And I'll just note real briefly, if you are able to, I would encourage you to donate blood at this time. I've seen recently the Red Cross saying that they have, they've had thousands of cancellations of blood drives recently, which is going to translate into pretty difficult times, especially what I just read about the need of 600,000 units of blood per year in California. So, if you are, if you're healthy right now and have the opportunity, please do donate. So, we'll move on to the next item. Notice to the public, madam clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card is completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode.
All right, we're moving into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities, which I suspect will be relatively short. So, let me start with Mr. Hurdman. Mr. Hurdman?
Yeah, I actually have nothing to report because I've been staying at home ever since the governor ordered us to do so. As is the case, I'm sure, with all of my colleagues on the council, I've been spending as much as five, six hours a day responding to emails that I'm receiving from constituents, and just trying to keep them updated on city action regarding the virus and providing with as up-to-date information as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
I too have been sequestered, so I have, and we haven't had any public meetings, so I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to thank, of course, our staff, doing an excellent job. And I know the hallways seem lonely and there's a lot of pressure, but we're counting on you. We know that we have the best staff in the county, and you're making us proud. I want to thank, of course, our first responders in uniform, and also those non-uniform who are interacting with the public, our healthcare professionals. I have a personal thanks to my local Ralphs and to all the grocery store workers who are going to work. And I just wanted everyone to know that my wife and I, and our one-year-old, if he's able to, are praying for you individually. And if you send us emails, I know all of us are at home, and we have to review our emails. If there's anything to do for you individually, please let us know. And I just wanted to reiterate that this is not a time to panic. It's not insurmountable. It's obviously stressful and unknown. In the flu epidemic, my great-grandmother was a nurse for the Red Cross early 1900s, and I imagine that generation that's no longer with us could relate to what we're going through. But quite honestly, no one living that I'm aware of can really relate to the fears and the stress that we're facing in America for the first time in this lifetime. So, prayers to everyone, and my colleagues and I, and the mayor's doing a great job. My colleagues and I were thinking about you, and we're feeling the stress, believe it or not, as well, on a bigger level, because we all care about the city so much. So, thank you, God bless. And is this a time for A1, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Unfortunately, it is likely that we're going to be facing a significant dip in revenue in the next couple of months. We are a very well-run city financially, and we've had an emphasis on paying down our debt and having large reserves. And right now, we're gonna be the beneficiaries of those policies that we've set up for about, going on six years now. And, but what I would like to do, just because I think that it's so important that we protect essential services in the city, and we be sure that staff knows that the revenue is there, of course, to pay their salaries, especially police and fires, those who will keep us safe, just to ask staff to bring back an item for us to vote on, simply to look at all non-essential projects, one by one, the dais, and perhaps push them off six months or some time. This is not essential projects, but things that we don't necessarily need, for sure, because I think it's gonna take a little bit of time for us to see how, what the ripple effects are gonna be on the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I also have been sequestered, and I have stayed at least five feet away from everyone, including my family, except for when I go on walks. And it's been like being a pinball in a pinball machine to try to navigate our sidewalks and our streets and everything, so that's something that we're gonna be talking about a little bit later. I did want, I also have been monitoring emails and posts and that sort of thing, and one of them was so disturbing to me that I asked Mark Vakoyevich, our utilities director, to make a slide for us, which is up right now. And it tells about the things that we definitely should not be flushing down our toilets. And I think it's really important for people to realize that we do not want problems with our sewer system right now. And you don't want it, you don't want our public employees to be exposed to that sort of thing. So, I know we mostly know this thing, but sometimes our tenants don't know it, sometimes our grandchildren don't know it, but it's really important, especially Kleenex, do not be flushed down our toilets. So, that was something that I really appreciate, Mark, putting this together for us and really emphasizing to everyone we know. I think that's all for right now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, thank you. Well, I too don't have much to say, but I would like to encourage everyone, because I'm a boat guy, that we pull from the same oar, and that we, we all work through this together. And I know we, we can, but I just, I just wanna encourage everyone to just, you know, this is a team effort, and we'll get through it. But I'm just really impressed with how great our city manager, our staff, and everyone, the police chief, fire, everybody's working darn hard. They really are pulling on that oar. So, I just wanna make sure we all do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
None, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I suppose my, the only one I'll raise is I spent a couple hours on the phone today with TCA. I'm the vice chair of the San Joaquin Hills Board. As you can imagine, not many people are using the toll road at the moment, which is a good thing from a health-safety standpoint and a really bad thing for the toll road agency. So, they are gonna be putting a lot of contingency plans into place already, trying to determine what this is gonna look like for them in terms of revenue dips and bond covenants and the like. So, there's a long road ahead for a whole lot of folks, including businesses, obviously, and people. And then at the government level, there are gonna be a lot of ramifications out of what's happening right now. But we've got really good, solid, smart people working on it. So, I do appreciate the work of our staff and TCAs as well. So, with that, we're gonna go into the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are Items 1 through 14 and supplemental Item 19. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, would you like to note any recusals or pull any items? First, Mr. Hurdman?
None for me.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to lodge a conflict on Item Number 8 due to prior employment in telecom industry, so business interest?
Thank you. Ms. Brenner? Mr. Duffield?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
None.
And I have none. So, now we'll go to public comments on the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, can you hear?
I can, thank you.
Item Number 5 on the consent calendar, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to call your attention to Item 5 on the consent counter, which is in agreement with franchise trash haulers, that you are gonna consider granting franchises a month from now, in April. It has attached to it an agreement that I think probably needs a little bit of work before then. One comment I wanted to make is today was trash day in my neighborhood. I noticed that our trash hauler for the city contract, CRNR, was taking all of the carts, whether they were marked for recycling or not, putting them all in the same truck this morning, which is not their normal procedure. Normally, a recycling truck comes later in the day. So, I was curious if we know if recycling has, for some reason, been suspended during the pandemic, or if there was some other reason for that. Second comment, I'm not totally sure I understand the 55% diversion criteria that the trash haulers are being expected to meet, and how that will be confirmed, that they're doing that, whether it just means that they have to, it says 55% of the processable municipal waste. I thought it was the entire waste that they had to do. And I don't know if it just means they have to take it to the recycling, or it actually has to be that after it's recycled, anyway. And the final point I wanted to make about this, which may need some adjustment also, as you've heard from, when you've heard about this contract before, you know that there's a feature in it, that if the franchisee has a customer who is producing more than four cubic yards per week, the franchisee has to make sure that they are implementing various recycling programs for food scraps and so forth. When we heard about this before, we heard that that four cubic yard per week threshold might change to two cubic yards as of January of this year. So, I am curious whether that change has happened or not, and the contract has to be revised. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on public on the consent calendar? All right, so, Mr. Webb, I know why you stood up, but I'll just suggest that unless we call you up, we'll keep the distancing to a minimum, so you can, you can go back to it then. I'll answer his question. To Mr. Mosher's point, I will say, yes, we received a letter from CRNR. We also received a letter from Waste Management advising us that due to the COVID-19 event, they will be suspending all processing of refuse recyclables, closing down the recycling facilities, and sending all refuse directly to landfill for disposal. We also received, like, as I noted, we also received a similar notice from Waste Management, and we're expecting commercial haulers to follow suit. We're following up with CalRecycle to find out what the effects are, not only on us, but on trash haulers. But I want to point out that the answer is yes, we did receive a letter telling us exactly that on Thursday of last week, so brave new world right now. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't want Mr. Webb to come up. I want him to keep his six feet of distance. No, 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 this is kinda fun, yeah. Would you recommend, yeah, that's, that's perfect. If we believe, if we're recyclers, should we just try to cram our bin full of recycling and hold off until they re-initiate, or how do you see this unfolding? Wait till people at home who, who try to recycle.
So, we met with CRNR this week. We met with their representatives and talked about, one, we gotta get some noticing out, because as Mr., we got the comment here, they are doing a single pass now, because all the material's going straight to the landfill, so why run two or three trucks up the street, just bringing it in? So, nothing's being currently recycled. I understand they can when they dump it in their tipping yard, they'll try to pull out big stuff. They're also still doing curbside, so if you have a big unit like a refrigerator or something like that, that'll get picked up for now and be recycled. I don't know how long this is gonna last. We have been notified, again, by Waste Management, CRNR, and we also got a memo from all the others, like Ware and Universal, that they're now doing this process too. So, I think recyclables are having two problems, one with the current virus. The other thing is there's no market. China, they call it the China Sword. It's not taking any in material anymore. There's, it's piling up, so they're just dumping it on that count. So, we need CalRecycle to give us some leadership on this.
Thank you. All right. Okay, seeing no further discussion, do I have a motion? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, move the balance of the consent count, Items 1 through 14, and we have a recusal from Councilmember Muldoon on Item 8. And we have a continuance on Item 16, that's the fee study update. And do we have a motion?
Yep, sorry, the, so 16's not on consent, and then we also need to include 19 as well?
Right.
Okay.
And amendments to the minutes, Item 1, please.
Incorporated in?
Yep.
Okay, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Muldoon. I need to do a roll call vote, given the two members on the, on the phone. So, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner? Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
All right, and I am an a as well. Okay, we're gonna be moving into public comments on non-agenda items. So, I'm gonna ask, let's not queue up, so I'll just give you time. We don't have a lot of people, obviously, in the audience. Mr. Klob, why don't you come on up first?
My apologies, I didn't read the ordinance title for Item 3, just one moment. Ordinance Number 2020-9, in ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2019-009 to repeal and replace Section 20.48.200 accessory dwelling units of Title 20, planning and zoning, and amend related provisions of the Newport Beach municipal code applicable to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units pursuant to state law.
All right, and the motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll move into public comments. Mr. Klob? So, I'm sorry, Mr. Klob, what we're doing, that, you can stand, just to have your foot, part of your foot on there. I apologize, we're trying really hard to keep it as sanitary as possible.
Sure.
Okay.
So, my name is Charles Klob, but then you knew that. You may have read about Costa Mesa's closing off the council meetings to public participation, but their allowance of developers to make presentations in person if they are allowed. I urge you not to adopt that policy, that you may be inclined to do, and either do one of two things. First, postpone any public hearings on developments until this is settled. Probably nothing's gonna get built anyway. Failing that, to allow the public to call in, you probably heard the quality of the sound from Mr. Hurdman and Mr. Duffield is poor. The technology exists to make the quality of their calling in very good. And you could arrange something with hardware and some technical support to allow residents to call in and testify, and allow the applicant to call in and testify. Tonight, you're postponing a public hearing on a very controversial project that's probably not gonna get built for some time, even if it was approved, and it's moved to the 14th. I urge you to postpone that until the public can participate, or at the very least, it is an equitable participation on the part of the public and the applicant. That's it. Godspeed to you.
Thank you. I'll make a note on that one after public comments. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, so, yep, I will say the reason that we are going to continue that item, and we're gonna bring it up in just a moment, the reason we're gonna continue it is because we're not in a position yet to be able to do what you just described. We have three weeks between now and the next meeting. We have a lot of government bodies right now trying to figure out how to hold public meetings virtually with varying degrees of success. I will encourage, you know, our public members here, and anyone watching on television, if you have seen something that really works, send it in to us. We're gonna be reaching out to a whole lot of cities to figure out how to make this work properly. But to your point about equity, yep, that's, that's really high up on our list of making sure that we're getting good public comments, and we're making, and we can do that in as close to real time as we possibly can. So, if you have suggestions, by all means, let us know, because this is really important to us, and that's one of the reasons you're seeing a fairly light agenda tonight. Ms. Dixon?
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Klob, I know from your prior professional experience, you have that expertise that you have graciously and generously offered at no fee to the city. I certainly would support the mayor's suggestion. You know more than we do on this. If the technology is available, that we could lease or avail ourselves of, that would be great to have your input. So, please share that with us.
Yep, much appreciated. So, we're gonna move into our public hearings. Item Number 15, we need no staff report. The recommendation is to continue the item. Do we have any public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. I'll make a motion to continue the item per staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Dixon has seconded it. I'm gonna do a roll call. First, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye. Sorry for the delay, but I have to turn on my microphone each time.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Hurdman. It's, it's helpful. Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, so that unanimously move to continue. We'll move into Item Number 16, approval of the fee study update. We have a staff recommendation to continue this item as well. I would, let's see, do we have a, I would suggest to a date to be determined. Why don't we do this, why don't we set it for three meetings from now? So, I'm not sure what date that is, but we'll set it for three meetings from now. So, do we have any public comment on this item, considering we're going to be moving to continue it?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have a comment that I think is more of a policy matter than details of the fees. So, perhaps I should make it to you now, so you can be thinking about it for the future. And I would like to call your attention to the cost recovery table, which is Exhibit A on page 16-47. And you would tell from a casual look at that, that we do not have a uniform appeal policy in Newport Beach. You'll see the first line of it has to do with appeals of decisions by the building official. You'll see they charge a fee for that, $1,715 is proposed. It is not charged if the appeal is successful, which makes some sense, because the person is challenging a decision by a employee, and if the city employee was found to make a bad decision by the appeal body, seems reasonable that they should not be charged. They're being charged not for the appeal hearing, but actually for that city employee to write a report explaining why the appeal is frivolous, so that makes sense. But then a couple of lines down, you'll see appeals to the planning commission. Somebody is appealing an erroneous decision by a planning official employee. We don't refund the fee, so there's disparity there between the two things. If you look farther down, you'll find for harbor matters, there's one obscure case. They'll charge a $100 fee, probably not reimbursing the city's costs. But other harbor-related matters are charged at the full rate. There is no subsidy for that. And then we have appeals, as I pointed out, to finance committee quite frequently, that have to do with Parkway Tree matters. And we have, it's unclear what our policy is for that, whether we charge for those appeals, whether we subsidize them, whether we charge the full rate, what we do. So, there's a policy problem here, that we do not have a uniform policy, regardless of what the numbers are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. I'll move to continue this item three meetings. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second by Ms. Dixon. I'll take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, passes unanimously. All right, we'll move into Item Number 17, Community Development Block Grant Program, public hearing for preparation of 2020 to 24 consolidated plan, unless I see a request for a public, or for a staff report. Seeing none, I will go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. For those who did read the staff report, the purpose of tonight's hearing is actually to encourage public input on what on, on what the next phase for the next five years should be of the community block grants. It was called, trying to call attention to an online survey that the city has. When we did this five years ago, the city got only 57 responses to its online survey. A month or so ago, there was a news splash on the city website telling people about the survey. The survey is still open till the end of this week. Out here in the staff report, the public does not know that. There was a public meeting about a month ago, and immediately the day after that, the news splash disappeared. Other than the few people who went to that public meeting, I don't think anybody knows that the survey is going on. So, I at least will tell you and the public that there is a survey. You can go to find on the city website, but if you, in the search box, type in the letter CDBG, Element Block Grant, one of the hits on that will direct you to where the survey is. Otherwise, it's very hard to find. We had more than 57 responses, but however many we get, I don't think it's going to be a very safe place that we have.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, bringing it back. I'll just emphasize what he said. Through March 27th, we have a survey up online. We do encourage you to fill it out. If you go to our city website and search CDBG survey, you'll, I certainly hope, will find it. You can also go in our staff report, we have referenced it, it is bit.ly/newportbeachresident. So if you will go there, then we will, you'll be able to fill this survey out. Any other, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to make a comment. I want to commend the community. Thank you, Mr. Mosher, for bringing attention to this. This is an item that I speak about probably every year, because usually at the time, we get the recommendations from the consultant, and these recommendations have very, well, they're fine organizations to, these funds are directed to, but I think with appropriate community involvement can do better to reflect the needs of our community. I said this a year ago, or many months ago, when we were just approving the dispersment of the funds, and the funds were going to outside the city, into the county. A small portion of those were going to homeless-related needs, and given homelessness, and actually, given the current problems, economic and, economic and health-related issues we're going through with this virus, I would like to make sure that programs that really benefit the people of Newport Beach are incorporated in the consultants and staff's analysis of the need. It's, it's a lot of money, small amounts of money to small, different groups. I just want to call attention to how important, and Mr. Mosher is right, that the community needs to be involved and have a voice in this, because these are your federal tax dollars at work, that come back to help certain underserved areas of our community, of which there are those in the community, and I urge the community to get involved, and I appreciate staff calling our attention to this, and managing this under the rules of the federal government. But these are federal tax dollars that come back to the city of Newport Beach, and we should all have a role in how those are dispersed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comments up here, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
To, for staff recommendation?
I make a motion for staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Brenner. I will go roll call, so, Mr. Hurdman, you can take yourself off mute in just a moment. So, we'll go roll call vote. Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, it passes unanimously. Last item up is our, sorry, I want to get the name of it correct. Current business, item number 18, novel coronavirus COVID-19 update, and we'll start with our city manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to be providing a brief update, and this will be taking, continuing on from the update that was provided at the last special council meeting on Wednesday. And since that last Wednesday, it continues to be a changing and, you know, challenging time with a lot of actions being taken. We continue to adapt and take measures, and really keeping the safety and welfare of our community and our employees at the top of our priority as we do so. Since last Wednesday, on Thursday on March 19th, that was a pretty significant announcement from our governor, who issued an executive order, where essentially everyone, it was a stay-at-home order, and only to go out for essential needs. There were a set of essential jobs and sectors to be covered, but other than that, a really a stay-at-home order that went statewide. So, very significant action that was directed, that was given on that Thursday, Thursday night. From there, there was a lot of activity over the weekend, that certainly, there's comments, we've certainly gotten emails about, certainly, we have talked amongst city staff, with other government agencies, and certainly, the state has also taken note of too. And following that on, I guess the 23rd is Monday, yesterday, Monday on March 23rd, the governor in his update mentioned due to the amount of activity that was seen, of closing some of the parking lots for state parks being closed effective starting today. We continue to see additional actions based on that type of activity from the county as well, where this morning, the Board of Supervisors had a discussion, and the county executive ordered the all beach parking lots in Orange County to be closed. So with those types of actions, we've also adapted and adjusted accordingly as well. We continue, based on the state's statewide mandate, to be at, be at home as much as possible. We certainly did an adjustment starting last Friday with our own employees, so that essential services continue to be provided, but to the extent they could be provided through telecommuting purposes, we do that with our employees. So we're certainly operating with, really taking a strong look at what can be provided and have that social distancing and separation as we do so. But it is really important for us to continue to provide our operations. We certainly have our first responders, we have critical utility and public works infrastructure, so we really do our endeavoring to continue to provide services, albeit finding different ways to continue to do so. So we continue to do those with these orders in place still. As we, as I noted, with both the county and the state, taking some actions based on the activity seen over the weekend to try to continue that enforcement of the social distancing, we have done that as well. So on Monday yesterday, we moved forward to close down any recreation equipment, taking down volleyball nets, putting up boards on our basketball courts, so all our sports facilities and our playground equipment as well, places where it tend to be a gathering, being able to encourage to discourage that, and again, to continue that stay-at-home directive, and to enhance and enforce that as much as we can. Continuing on that theme as well is, this morning, we went out with communications about closing our beach parking lots. Just the amount of activity that was seen around the beach areas is troubling, and given if there's continued to be good weather over the weekend, this coming weekend, we want to make sure we have enough discouragement there as well. And also impacting that is seeing with the, with the county having their order on the beach parking lots closed, and also seeing some of the neighboring cities as well with those same types of orders. We want to be working in tandem there on that, and we're certainly doing a lot of communication out publicly on this, on this change in direction and the closures to hopefully discourage the type of activity we saw over the last weekend. And we'll go more into what we see this, the beach parking lots, this closure plan look like. I'll have Public Works Director Dave Webb speak to that in just a moment.
Okay.
We continue with our EOC center open, and continue to respond to, you know, events that occur. I'll have both chiefs come up and can make a brief presentation on what they're seeing, if you'd like, there. And then obviously, we're continuing to monitor all the directives and guidelines that are coming down from the county and state and federal governments. I think it's important to remember, we're going through something so uncharted and unprecedented, and going through at a very fast pace sometimes through this, that we are now about five days into that governor's stay-at-home order, and about nine days into when the federal government announced the 15 days to slow the spread initiative. And I kind of, sometimes it's important to take a step and think about that, you know, and it's, it's a whole lot for, for us individually, as a community, as governments, to be reacting and adjusting and getting through this. And we still don't know a lot. We don't know where we are on this curve, and what's, you know, at what point is going to be, you know, where we're hitting that, trying to get that flattening. And, but clearly, with just five days in on the governor's order, we're kind of on the front end here. And I think it's really important that as we have directives come out, as we see behaviors, that we are looking at making changes, but then we also want to be very steady and thoughtful in our approach as much as we can, and see how actions, what happens to those, and then adjust from there accordingly. And we want to keep doing that closely, monitor, adjust, and keep moving forward.
So, sorry, just a second, just for my fellow council members, I just want you to know, my intention is to allow all of our directors to speak, and then we'll go through questions. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay. And just quickly, there's a lot of things that are wrapped up. Every time there's a directive, there's changes in what we're doing. There's a lot of decisions being made, a lot of problems that come up that we need to problem solve for. So I just wanted to highlight a few that are current right now. And as the mayor had mentioned earlier, we are looking at our council meetings and other necessary public meetings that we hold of how we assure that we have good public input through those. So we're working through those and looking at different technologies there. We continue to be very mindful of the homeless needs in our community through this, been closely engaged with the county and the efforts they're taking there. CityNet Services are outreach provider, that's still considered an essential service. They are out, outreach with the homeless that we have in our community, and encouraging individuals to go into sheltered places. We're also assessing, and so far, from what we see, we don't have anybody exhibiting signs of the COVID-19, so that, that's a good thing at this point. And then I just mentioned, you know, with so much uncertainty, and as we're planning through, we, I'm really taking a look at things from a two-week increment right now, in how we plan for our workforce and our services, and keep making adjustments through this very, very fluid time at this point in time. Oops. All right. As I mentioned, I'm going to have the directors, I'll start with Dave Webb to come in to talk about our beach parking lots closures plan that's starting tonight.
Give me a second, I'm going to come up with a PowerPoint here. Again, good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Webb, Public Works Director. City Manager asked me to talk about how we're going to implement some important beach closures of our parking lots tonight, so I wanted to give you and the public a heads up on how this is going to take place. So, starting tonight, if I could go back, my slides are out of order here. We are going to begin at 10 o'clock tonight. The police department is going to, when they close and lock the gates, we're going to keep them locked. So the gates will be locked on the Corona Mar Main Beach Parking Lot. We'll be locking the lower gate, not the upper, because you still have Breakers Drive that needs to get in and out. We'll be locking the gate on the Baboa Pier Parking Lot, the Baboa Pier itself, the Newport Pier, and also the McFadden Square Beachside Parking, like I call it. That's the one against the ocean in front of the restaurants where we can close the circulation. I have some exhibits to show you on that later. And then tomorrow morning, beginning at 6:00 a.m., our Public Works crews will go out and install barricades and signs to close some of these following lots. The A Street Lot near the Baboa Pier, the B Street Lot near the Baboa Pier, the McFadden Plaza Circular Lot, that's the one kind of in front of Sharkies you can rotate in and out of. And then we have five seashore parking lots that will be closing tomorrow morning as well. So real quick, for those who want to see where these are, here's an exhibit of the Baboa area, and the areas in red will be the parking lots that will be closed. This is the Baboa Pier's A Street and B Street Lots. And then for the McFadden Square area, you'll see the circular lot along the ocean there will close. We're going to keep the circulation on 22nd, 23rd going. And then on McFadden Square itself, the spaces in front of the square, and I mentioned that circular lot, you'll see the, kind of in the railroad curve there, they'll close that. That'll leave adequate parking for the businesses along there to keep functioning, and should limit the amount of beach parking available. And then there are five lots here along seashore that will be closing also. So with these closures, we also are going to be putting out our changeable message signs. We have four of those, and we're going to implement those out on Newport Boulevard. As you come into town, just south of Industrial Way, you'll have two of them on Coast Highway. We'll have one coming in from the south, I'm sorry, the east and the west, both at San An River and between Newport Coast Drive and Pelican Point. And then we, we're going to put one up on Jamboree, that's probably the best street coming in, just past, or south of South Bristol, between South Bristol and Bayview Way, to alert people that the beach clause, excuse me, the beach parking lots are closed, and to also keep social distancing requirements in mind. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions on the parking lots after the, next chiefs.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go through all of the chiefs, and then we'll ask questions. There will probably be questions on most of the presentations, so I want to make sure we get through it all. All right, Chief Boils.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jeff Boils, your fire chief. Quick update on today's numbers of the COVID-19 cases here in Orange County. We went from 125 yesterday up to 152 today, as of this afternoon, which is a 22% increase, and I just saw a report that we experienced our first death here in Orange County. As I reported in the special session last week, we, we do expect to see that number to continue to rise, just as a result of the amount of tests that are taking place. And I'm sure you've seen on the news that some private doctors are getting tests now, and they're performing tests. So more and more tests are taking place, so naturally, the numbers will rise. To date, Newport Beach Fire Department has transported one known positive patient, and that's because of our relationship with Hoag Hospital. So when a patient is transported and turns out to be positive, they notify our EMS division, and then we're able to do an algorithm to make sure that our firefighters and paramedics that came in contact with them didn't experience a high exposure, which we've had none yet. We do not have any personnel that have exhibited any signs or symptoms yet, so we're still fully staffed. Our fire stations remain closed to the public, coming in, and community outreach as well. We're just trying to keep our social distancing. We've limited some of our training, but really, at this point, we're just at a, a service delivery point where we, we touch people when we absolutely have to. Our masks, our eye protection, our stockpile is strong right now. I've received multiple emails, several from prominent people in the community that have access to masks and eye protection and gowns, and I appreciate that, and we're just not there yet. We actually have means and ways to obtain it, we believe, at this point, but nonetheless, what we have in stock seems to be solid for now. We continue to work and partner with Hoag Hospital, and as I mentioned, we have a system in place for tracking exposures. And you may have heard as well, Hoag has the tents that they're starting to experiment with, where they're putting up, and they're preparing for surge capacities on their own. So, I don't believe they've actually pressed them into service yet, but it does look like they're, they're ready to do so if they need to. As, also, as I mentioned last week, I want to point out again that we sent our firefighters and paramedics to seven skilled nursing facilities and convalescent homes, because we're seeing throughout the country that some of the staff at those convalescent homes have a tendency to go from patient to patient to patient, and can spread it. So, our goal is to get in there and educate the staff, just in case they are not aware. My assumption here in Newport Beach is that they are aware, but we're doing our best to help them. But also, they can work seamlessly with our personnel too, when, when we arrive, so that the, the transition is seamless to get a patient that needs to be taken from a skilled nursing facility over to the hospital. Our focused efforts right now have been on identifying the needs of senior citizens, disabled folks, and homeless. Should issues arise where they need special services, we're working with Public Works, Police Department, and Recreation Senior Services to provide anything that we can. And I'd like to give that number out one more time, if anybody is watching for Oasis is... is area code 949-644-3244. So if you need medication, you need meals, you need supplies for your home, call that number, and we can help figure it out for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, Member of the City Council, John Lewis, your Police Chief. We at the Police Department, along with everybody else in this community, has been managing all the changes that we've seen in our daily lives. And for our patrol operations, sometimes those changes are coming fast and furious and hourly, sometimes it almost seems like by the minute. But I also want to point out to everyone that's watching and listening today that we still remain a full-service police department. Now, we have emphasized for, during our COVID-19 response, that we're going to emphasize telephonic reporting, we're also going to emphasize online reporting, but we want folks to understand that we are open for business, and if you call 911, we are here for you. We've taken a number of steps over the past several days, and we'll continue to support our community in response to the COVID-19 situation we find ourselves in. We're continuing to be very highly visible in our areas that we know are being impacted, our beaches and parks, our grocery stores, our medical facilities, our lifelines. And we're spending a significant amount of time there to make sure that they're feeling safe and supported. We've been engaged in significant educational efforts with our retail stores that have been impacted by the governor's executive order, and we're getting positive outcomes and understanding from our folks in the business community that we know are being severely impacted. We've been getting really good compliance, which is, I think says a lot about our business community. We've been working closely with our public safety partners, obviously very closely with fire, but also with our Marine Safety Division, our lifeguards in particular, to monitor the activity on our beaches. And we're encouraging everyone to, again, as Chief Boils mentioned, to practice social distancing when in our public spaces. Some questions I've been getting about protective equipment for our first responders, all of our police officers are equipped with the protective gear recommended by CDC for first responders, and we also have significant amounts in reserve to replace whenever we have the need to dawn this. And again, I mentioned staying in touch with our local businesses. That's been something that's really important to us as well. A lot of our, a lot of our businesses right now are operating skeleton crews, our hotels and some of those others, so we, it's important that we stay very present in that space. One thing I'd like to touch on is rumor control, and we are hearing a lot of rumors. We're getting a lot of phone calls into our communication center about things that people hear on the street, or they're hearing through social media. And I wanted to point to a couple of resources for folks that can get some really good information when you start to hear these rumors on the street. FEMA has just launched a public website, and this is to specifically address rumors about the federal COVID-19 response. It's a great website. I encourage you to take a look at it for some of the things that we're hearing out there, and some of the, to give you an idea, and I think we've all heard these, you know, there's a national lockdown, the entire country is going to be quarantined for two weeks, you know, I need to stockpile as many groceries as possible. So the FEMA website, to address those specific and many other rumors that have been commonly spread out there, is at fema.gov/coronavirus/roomercontrol. And when it comes to rumors, I encourage everybody right now to, let's not believe everything that we hear right now, because simply there is a lot of misinformation out there, and I think it's causing some unnecessary anxiety in our community, and I don't think it's necessary. And so if you don't know for a fact this information that you have here, please don't pass it along. Go to trusted sources that we have, information that's available to you. The FEMA website is one in particular, but the city manager had also mentioned it, and Mr. Pope and his team are doing a fantastic job of updating our city's website to the minute with the most available information that is out there. And I really encourage folks to take advantage of that, because some of the rumors and things that are out there are really not helping us, chasing them down in times like this right now, so let's just make sure that we're paying attention to that. One more thing I want to mention as well is unfortunately fraud is something that we're going to see in this time, and we also see during many other emergencies. And I think that we all need to be on the lookout for these types of scams, unfortunately, that manifest in these types of emergencies. Criminals are going to set up fake websites or charities, send emails, texts on social media, pretending to be from organizations like the World Health Organization, or the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, to profit illegally, to, in essence, to steal from us and to use this crisis as a means to do it. So if, I'll give our non-emergency phone number again, it's 949-644-3717. If you feel like you're coming across something like this, or you're not at all, if you're listening to that intuition that you feel like there's something wrong here, please give us a call. We have people to answer it. Again, we are staffed to deal with this, and we want to know about it. I also want to touch on price gouging. Now, price gouging isn't something that we have seen present here in Newport Beach, but I want to remind people that violations of price gouging is, are subject to criminal prosecution here. And we see this, and we have not seen this fortunately in Newport Beach, but this law is going to apply to necessities right now that unfortunately are becoming somewhat scarce. Everything from medical supplies, non-prescription medications, antibacterial products, things like that that you hear about are things that we have seen historically as something subject to price gouging. It's also, it's a misdemeanor for a hotel or motel to raise rates by more than 10% during a declared emergency and for 30 days following a stated emergency. Now again, we haven't seen that, but it's just information out there that I think it's important for people to be aware of. Orange County District Attorney's Office has taken a very aggressive and affirmative stance on this, and they've established a hotline to report people and businesses they suspect in price gouging or any other COVID-19-related scam. So you can call us at the Police Department, or you can also call the Orange County District Attorney's Coronavirus Scam Hotline at 714-834-3482.
All right, did we have anyone else? All right, I'll tell you what, actually, Chief, why don't you stay here for just a minute? Here's what we're going to do. If you have questions for the Chief, let me know, and then we'll go back through in reverse order, and then I'll make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak at the end as well for any comments they have. So if you have a question for the Chief, Ms. Dixon? Okay. Yeah, so here's what I'll do. Why don't you, if you, if you'd like to ask specific to the police chiefs, just let me know. We'll go back in reverse order, and then, like I said, I'll make sure everyone has an opportunity to make any comments that they'd like to as well. Ms. Brenner.
John, in the rumor department, we're getting a lot of complaints about teenagers that are gathering in various locations and not practicing social distancing. And that one rumor I saw said that we were issuing $400 tickets to people for going against that social distancing rule. Can you address that? And what can we do to impact these teenage groups?
We've been, we've been getting complaints about that. In fact, Officer Ferris, who's here tonight, was working today, and he responded to a couple of calls, particularly in our parks, related to that. We've been gaining compliance when we go out there and talk to folks and remind them what it is that we're asking everyone to do. So we haven't had a situation where we've had to go overboard, or not overboard, I shouldn't, it just, it didn't seem that a citation or arrest has been necessary up to this point for this. We've been getting the compliance that we had hoped for when we talked to these individuals up to this point, and we expect that that's going to continue. But we have been receiving the complaints, we have been going out and dealing with them. Our Park Patrol has also been involved in this, and also our Parks and Rec staff out there. But it's in the parks in particular is where we've been seeing that. On the beach, obviously, as well, we had some complaints over the weekend about that.
Fashion Island was another that I heard about.
Okay. All right. Before I have the chief sit down, Mr. Hurdman or Mr. Duffield, do you have any questions for our Police Chief?
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Muldoon. Sorry.
Got questions for both chiefs. I could have used that website, rumorcontrol.com, in high school. I don't know where it was when I was growing up. But I want to address a couple of fraud issues. I've heard of, I think, at least two that involves authorities or someone pretending to be authorities showing up at a door. Could you, are you familiar with those? Could you educate the public on what to expect or not expect at their front door?
I think as a, as general rule, when it comes to people that are approaching you at your front door, I don't think you open the door for anyone unless you're satisfied that you know who they are. And particularly in times like this right now, where I think that we're all a little bit on, just on edge, you know, with all the things that we're hearing, just call us, we'll come out, and we'll, and we're happy to handle it. And most of the time, if it's someone that you know, they're not going to have a problem talking with us about it. We do have, here's a scam that we have and what we've seen in the past, particularly when it comes to people knocking on the front door. We always tell people to answer your door, let them know that you're home, because we have seen burglars that will come in and prey upon individuals in their houses, and it has happened in our community where they'll knock at the front door, not hear a response, think the house is vacant, and then maybe force entry through a rear slider or something like that. So we encourage people, when you get the knock on the door, to let people know that you're there, but if it's someone that you're not familiar with, or someone that's, you're just not super, not getting that good feeling about, then call us and we'll come out and deal with it. Soliciting, all those different types of things that we have unfortunately happen in our neighborhoods are things that we get calls on frequently, and we're happy to come out and address.
Yeah, I think generally, if someone's soliciting at this time, you should be very suspect because of the distancing rules. And our first responders are never going to show up in a hazmat suit that's not equipped with a March Newport Beach vehicle out front or a badge. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, our, our police uniforms are, this is what you should expect to see right now. None of our, none of our officers have been authorized any type of hazmat suit or something like that. We're still wearing our traditional police uniforms, our fire department are as well. But again, you just never know. If it's something that, again, anybody's worried about, if it's one of our police officers, you're going to be able to call 911, and someone's going to answer and say, yes, those are our police officers that are there. So you can verify that, and you can also do that with fire as well, because 911 comes to our police department. And anytime our fire department is out on something, then we have that entry in our CAT system as well.
So if anyone knocks at the door, claims to be from the city of Newport Beach, a resident can call 911 and confirm that that is in fact a city of Newport Beach employee.
Correct, they can.
And that's not considered to be a burden to our switchboard, so please do that. That's the most, I think, fearful scam, because it involves physical presence and perhaps entry. And can we do anything about price gouging of real estate in Newport Coast? That's not covered by the, okay. Thought I would try. I've got a couple of questions for either chief. Thank you so much for your service, Chief.
All right. We'll go Chief Boils. That was good. All right, we'll start with Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mr. Boils, you almost went to medical school, correct?
Paramedic school, it's close.
But you were, you were destined to go to medical school, right, until you changed your mind?
Up until about high school, yes.
That's more ambition than I ever had. Are you familiar with how stress affects the immune system?
Somewhat.
Somewhat. Well, you're not being a very good expert witness for me, Chief Boyle, but what I was trying to get at is essentially, you know, there's no health benefit to stress. So if you want to have the strongest immune system possible, adequate rest and staying calm is to your benefit. So if you're getting stressed about getting sick, and you want to fight getting sick, get unstressed. Are you familiar with the Johns Hopkins 2019 study? On the epidemics, preparedness for epidemics?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I'm sorry. I am just, you are a very smart guy, this is just not your day, and I'm not setting you upright. So essentially, we have some of the best paramedics around, they're trained with how to interact with residents, and they're wearing masks when they approach and go into homes, and they're very aware of spreading any infectious diseases. So if you have a problem, don't be afraid to see them, simply because you're afraid that you might get sick from their visit. But I did not prepare the chief for where I was going with this, but essentially, 2019, Johns Hopkins did a survey, and they found that all politics aside, regardless of which president is in the White House, we are one of the most prepared nations in the world, including industrialized nations, for epidemics. So what I'm trying to do is just instill in people the notion that we have the most competent staff. Our staff are well-trained, they're passionate about what they do, and we're blessed to live in a country where the CDC and NIH and HHS are dedicated to dealing with these sort of incidents. And if we work together and we don't get caught up in the stress or any panic, we can mitigate a lot of potential harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions up here? Mr. Hurdman or Mr. Duffield, do you have any questions for Chief Boils?
No, I don't, thank you.
I don't either, well, thank you though.
I'll just make one quick comment. Fire Chief Boils has been truly fantastic in the last week, week, two weeks. I get questions all the time lately of health-related questions. I'm getting a lot of questions about how to help. And then when Hoag recently reached out and asked us a question about how to tap into the National Reserves, Chief Boils was Johnny-on-the-spot for that. So the way that Chief Boils and his department have been working with the county, and also our local hospitals, is truly commendable, and I expect nothing less, but I'm always impressed by it. So I just want to say thank you for that. All right, Mr. Webb, why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
All right, we may have a few questions on beach closures. I'll start with you, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess, let me just be, speak more philosophically and then ask some specific questions. City Manager's slide talked about the governor issued his order, was it March 5th, that said stay at home?
The tire stat, the state mandate came out the, it was last Thursday night, yeah.
Seems like a long time ago, but anyway. So I guess this is really just a question as a city, this is the philosophical part of how do we get people to stay at home? When we know that we have 11 million visitors, give or take a few hundred thousand a year, but we still have people, that's a good thing in a broad sense, that want to come to Newport Beach, but we, how do we get people to stay at home? Even our residents, as well as the visitors? So we are dealing with the impacts of people coming to our community. Now, I applaud everything staff is doing in a broad sense too, in a broad and specific sense. The creativity, the innovation, the intensity of the work effort is admirable, so I'm totally supportive. And I, as well as all of us, we're all challenged as how to keep people home. It's a gubernatorial order, and people are still on our beaches and on our boardwalks, in our parking lots, and in our neighborhood streets, looking for places to park. So specifically, to you, Mr. Webb, in closing the parking lots, I think that's the right thing to do. What I'm concerned about in my district and on the peninsula, as we close the public parking lots, and then people who come, who are not staying at home because they're disobeying the governor's order, they're coming to the beach, and they're not going to find a place to park. So where do you think they're going to go? They're not, do you think they're going to turn around and go home? They're going to go and find a place to park in our residential neighborhoods. And this is an issue that concerns the residents of my district very much. From the river jetty to the, to the channel jetty, what, what are we going to do about the surplus of cars? And I doubt saying rescind the, I'm totally supportive of closing the parking, as we have to, obviously, now with the county. But what are we going to do about the spillover? Because these people, I believe, the majority of the people will not return, turn around and go, oops, we can't go to the beach in Newport Beach. They're going to find a way. And particularly, we're coming up with a lovely weekend ahead of us. What is our plan? And maybe it's a law enforcement plan too, but what are we going to do with these people who are going up and down our streets and will be parking illegally and parking to get to our beaches? What do we do?
So maybe first we started with, as we started looking at this closure, it's going to take some level of media, particularly to get out to like Orange County, the Empire, because a lot of our folks are going to come down, and you're right, they're going to come down here because it's nice, they've seen on television. It's a natural thing, I have friends in my city, Mishmael, saying, I'm going to go to the beach this weekend because I can lay out, get away from people, and it's a common thing to think that. So we'll see some level of that with this parking lot closures. Again, we're trying to discourage that, but also balance between the businesses and keeping our residents some level of circulation available for them. But you are right too, if we see a surge of folks coming down, they will go back into the neighborhoods, because that's where the parking's going to be. Right now, some people have talked to me that there is available street parking right now, so if we close the lots, if we just keep the current load, we can probably address it. If we start getting surges, it gets really nice, and people don't obey social distancing, I'm not sure what the next step is. We'll surely have to have the police do it. I don't think, at least Public Works, we don't have the authority to close highways and stop people from coming to the city. I did mention we're going to put changeable message signs out. Hopefully between that and all the other media, people will get that. I'm not sure where to redirect them, because I know the parks are being closed and other things with the state level, so it's going to be a bit of a challenge.
Can we say on those messagings, please go home to your community, follow the governor's order, stay home? I'm serious. Stay home.
Well, they'll definitely have the message of that there's no parking available for them, and we, and that was another reason why we had the messaging going out starting today, which is Tuesday, you know, in preparation for this coming weekend. And I think it's going to be really important to see how, how well the messaging syncs in with people. Again, it's, it's been five days since the governor's state mandate came out. There was a lot of press about it over the weekend. There was a lot of press about it over the weekend. We're now seeing with the state closing many of their parking lots, the county, several cities, I think there's a clear unified message about staying out of the beach areas. And I'd really like to see how it goes over this weekend. We'll closely monitor, to the extent we need to do enforcement for things like the double parking, the red zones, all that kind of illegal parking, we'll make sure to be out there. And then if we have to do additional measures beyond that, we look to implement those. But I think it's important to see how well this goes, particularly with the clear message that's coming from the state all the way down.
Well, I think that's, I appreciate that answer, I support that answer. And I think the overall message too is we're going day by day by this. So we have a weekend coming up. So in that spirit of additional ideas, I'd like to submit for our consideration, for your consideration, my colleagues, that we close the boardwalks. I'm not saying the beach, but the boardwalks. And let me explain why. I'm saying plural, Balboa Island and Balboa Peninsula. Last weekend, and I've told you this, so you know this, I rode my bike from one end to the other on Sunday, and it was like a normal day, a normal cool day. So the beaches were not overcrowded, there were plenty of social distancing, I could observe, on the beaches. But it was a normal day. The boardwalk was bumper to bumper people. And on a bike, when you're trying, and it's a narrow boardwalk, as we know, it is not a bike path, it's a promenade, and trying to thread between ongoing and going one traffic, pedestrians and other vehicles going one way, and electric bikes and electric scooters, and I saw the whole bit. You thread your way through traffic and you're within inches of people. I would like to propose that we keep the beaches open, that's tentative in my thought process, but that we allow people to go and they can walk on the fingers that go out to the water and to the beach. But the boardwalks, in my opinion, are very dangerous from a social distancing, a lack of social distancing. And I'd like to say just for the weekend, I'm not saying every day, but just for Saturday and Sunday, that would be my proposal to you, to council. I know our residents are kind of split roughly 50/50. Close the beaches, close the boardwalk, don't close the beaches. No one's really saying keep the boardwalks open, at least I haven't seen that. And I know everybody wants, residents want to walk on the boardwalk, that is great, and I would say just not on Saturday and Sunday because of an enforcement challenge is who's a resident, who's not. And it would just, what I would like to see is no one on the boardwalk except for the peninsula enforcement team on their bikes, making sure that there is no one on the boardwalks. We put little cones and no one walks through the street entry onto the boardwalk and onto the beach. The boardwalks will be closed. That's my proposal, just for one week only, this is not a permanent closure, but we have to, in my opinion, change behavior. And the city cannot be welcoming to everybody who wants to violate the governor's order. And the governor himself said people have to change behavior, and until people change behavior, we are going to be dealing with this serious health matter. So I am asking seriously to consider closing the boardwalks for just this one weekend, let's see if it works. And I just want to say also to commend staff for all that you're doing, the communications have been fabulous, and we're all going through this for the first time. So I'm not being critical at all, I'm just looking at ways to make sure that we do not see people on the boardwalk that are, I could have been exposed on my bike because I was within inches of people. In fact, the governor said this, every single person, each of us encounters is taking a personal risk. Every single person. And that's what we, I mean, this is, when are we going to accept the reality of the situation we're faced in? So I know we're Newport Beach, we don't like rules, but this is the health and safety of our community that we have to think about. So thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Let's see.
I need to speak, Will, when I can?
You bet. So it'll go Mr. Avery, Ms. Brenner, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Hurdman. All right, Mr. Avery.
Okay, thank you.
I tend to agree with Ms. Dixon on this only because of my own personal experience. I know everybody knows this, there's no way you can be on the boardwalk on a weekend, a great weekend day, and keep any sort of social distance that we're looking for. So it seems like heresy to suggest that, but I think given this extraordinary circumstance, we actually almost invited by keeping that open because people just, they just jam it and it's a place where everybody wants to be. But certainly the beach, people can find lots of room to isolate. And those that are close together on the beach are clearly violating because they have plenty of room to spread out. But that's not true on the boardwalk at all. And dare I say, the same is true to a large extent with Balboa Island, the same thing. My wife and I made a point not to go, like we like to go around Balboa Island, but you can't do it on a weekend day. And you can feel the breath of the joggers and it's just, it's really something. So, you know, I don't know, I think it's, it obviously presents a challenge to our police department to patrol something like that and our Public Works for the barriers and all the rest of it. So, and I think the main thing is to obviously message like crazy and try to get some of the news media to pick it up and get it out there. And I'd just like to say that I have every confidence, you know, one of the things I'm really happy about is that our fire department, our police department, public safety, lifeguards are so professional. It's going to be a tough weekend where all those folks are going to engage people who are here to have fun like they normally are and they just haven't quite gotten with it. And that's the recipe for trouble if you don't have really professional public safety folks helping manage that. And so I'd just like to in advance commend all of our public safety folks because I know they'll do a great job and we'll try to keep people safe. And really keeping people safe these days is keeping them separated. It's really interesting. And it presents new challenges for all of us. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
I'm fully supportive of closing the parking lots, as many parking lots as possible. I was, I am really concerned about people parking on our residential streets and especially like in Corona Del Mar with the big Corona parking lot closed, I know people are going to be parking along Ocean Boulevard and in our residential streets. And I actually yesterday had posted on Facebook that if more of our residents during the peak hours could move our own cars out onto our residential streets, that that provides fewer parking spaces for visitors. So I don't know if somebody wants to park their Maserati out there, but I'm fine with parking my Lexus out there on the streets. So I just think that that might provide fewer spaces for visitors to come in to mob our sidewalks. Now, when it comes to closing the boardwalk, I totally agree, it's not safe. I'm concerned about Ocean Boulevard because when I have been trying to go on my regular walks, I am zigzagging across the street, I am stepping up onto people's porches to get away from people. It's like you can't, you can't actually walk there with people going both directions without coming close to them face to face. I was going to suggest just as a guideline, if people would, on their sidewalks, always walk on the sidewalk to the right, then at least you're not coming face to face with other people. The people on the right side of the street are walking that direction, and if you have to pass somebody, you've got some room. The people on the left side of the street are walking this direction and they have room if they're all going the same direction. So that might be really helpful, at least for the people that are paying attention in Newport Beach. And if we could keep the joggers and the bikers in the street, it would also be really helpful. Because when they are jogging by you on the sidewalk and sweat is coming off of them and you can't get away from them, it's really dangerous. So the more we can keep the bikers and the joggers on the street, I think that's helpful. But if we are able to get the residential spaces filled up as much as possible, I'm wondering whether they would ever go all the way up to the oasis lots, Dave? Is that one that you would think about closing? Or two, that you would think about closing the lots that far away?
At this point, I don't think, you're mentioning the one on 5th and Marguerite, and I think that would be quite a distance. There's a lot of spots on Pacifico's Highway and working up there. So what we do is monitor that.
Okay.
Again, maybe in the summer we would, and hopefully we're beyond that, but this time of year, hopefully we're not closing that lot.
Okay. And in the past, when Bow Week was a big thing back in the 60s, we closed off the island, we closed off the peninsula, people were not allowed to drive down there unless they had a driver's license or a car registration that showed that they belonged there. We did it in the 60s, I don't know why we can't do it now, but it seems like we may get to that point where, because if we have all these people that are driving around looking for parking spaces, it's going to make just the streets dangerous as well. So I think we need to be prepared for something like that. And we also used to have, I remember at one point, we, the Corona Del Mar Residents Association, asked the police department to put a barricade at the top of Marguerite on July the 4th when beach parking was totally full. Because people were doing that then, they would come down to the beach, the beach parking lot was full, so they would just cruise around the streets and there was no parking there either. So we were able to divert some of that traffic that would normally just be cruising on our residential streets. If we could just say no beach parking and not specify whether it's in our parking lots or beach parking period, I think it might deter a few people, especially if we get it on the news.
And that is how we're publicizing it? It's, there's no beach parking, so we're not going to specific lots. And certainly if there's additional measures we need to take, we'll certainly evaluate them. We have to take the balance. I think when there's a closure for one specific event, for one specific location, that's something we can handle from a resource perspective, but if you start to look at the consequences across the city and different areas, and you know, we have a full, a robust level of first responders right now, but we have to have, we have to be aware, we could have illnesses coming in, this could be for an extended period of time and for the broader area. So we just have to really manage our resources wisely through that. But I understand, we need to consider things as we continue to go, absolutely. All right.
Before I get to Jeff, is it possible on the sign to say something like, no time for tourism? Not quite that, but no time for tourism, beach parking closed, or something like that? I mean, it's something that is clearly trying to deter people who are driving in for, you know, for a tourist destination. I mean, it's not, it really is not the time for tourism by any stretch of the imagination. So anyway, we can get creative, but it'd be helpful, I tend to agree, we can do something more probably than just beach parking closed, but we can be, we can work on that. All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, I really need to make some comments on behalf of the people that I represent here on Balboa Island. Closing beach parking lots is going to cause people to park on our residential streets, absolutely no doubt about it. Diane's Lido Isle, Balboa Island are the only two public islands in the harbor with public streets. And really something needs to be done. And here my comments are just in relation to Balboa Island. No other place in the city. The boardwalk last weekend was absolutely packed, as well as Marine Avenue and the residential streets even, because there were so many people on the island, parking on our streets, walking on our streets, getting to the boardwalk, getting to Marine Avenue, it was just out of control. I think I've had a number of people email me that live on the island this week, asking if the island can be closed to non-residents. And when you take into consideration that none of our businesses are open, there's really no reason for someone to come on to the island other than to get home. And I would like, I think this could be controlled very easily by signage at the entrance to the island before you come on to the Big Island Bridge. And signage at Ferry Landing on the peninsula side that just says the island for the weekend is closed to non-residents. And let's do it. Let's do it. I'm being asked to do this by a number of people that live on the island. And as Diane said, we can just do it for the weekend. And in fact, I'll even make a motion that we do so.
So just to be clear to all my fellow council members, this is not, there's no opportunity for motions because it's not been noticed that way. This is an oral report, so I just.
I can't understand you, Will, I'm sorry.
This is not noticed for any kind of motions. This is an oral report, but making recommendations is certainly permitted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No further, Mr. Webb, thank you very much. Any questions specifically for our city manager that haven't already been covered? I didn't, I couldn't imagine. I'll make sure, Mr. Duffield, Mr. Hurdman, any specific questions for our city manager?
Thank you. This is Duffield. I didn't have anything down, but I, yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. All right. Any parting, or you know what, should we go out to, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Brenner, go ahead.
I do have a question about business closings because we're getting complaints from people about certain businesses being opened and we're getting complaints about construction sites. So we need to at least tell people why people are still there working if they are and if they're allowed to do so.
So in the governor's order, he exempted a whole host of professions, and one of those is construction. I think it probably relates to some degree to the housing crisis and wanting to make sure that housing is still available. But there are 16 categories that were expressly excluded, and then he's amplified that, and it's almost a 14-page document of different positions that he believes is supporting critical infrastructure. So there's a significant portion of the jobs that are allowed to continue working.
Okay. All right. Hey, okay, Mr. Hurdman?
Yeah, I'm going to be a little assertive about this. I don't quite understand the, your comment, Will, about not being able to make a motion about closing the island this weekend.
So.
My understanding is that Brown Act provisions are being relaxed by the governor. And I think it's most appropriate that I make such a motion and that it be considered by the council for this weekend only.
So I'll defer over to Mr. Harp to answer that question then.
So many of the Brown Act provisions, you know, have been loosened by the governor during this time, but most of those are gears towards how people attend meetings and not so much on the noticing of it. It's not on the agenda for an action item, it's just here for an oral report. And so members of the public wouldn't have known that you would be taking those type of actions, but I know the city manager is taking everything you're saying into account. And the city manager has authority under the resolution you previously adopted to take certain actions. So I think that that's kind of where we're at tonight. It's not really here for an action item by the council.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just want to echo the city attorney because that was my intent of making the recommendations I made, that the city manager may, if with our voice recommendation, would take heed to what we have suggested now and see if we could be implemented, this closure of the boardwalks and if we want to follow Mr. Hurdman's recommendation for the entire island, to implement that before this coming weekend.
Okay, well, that's fine, I understand all that now. Great, I did recommend that Bay Drive be closed to vehicular traffic this week. I did recommend that the volleyball nets be taken down on the beaches. And so I am tonight then recommending that the closure of Balboa Island to the public be seriously considered for this week, for this weekend, excuse me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Avery, I'll have something after you, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a great discussion because you get a sense of what the community's feeling, but we can only deliver so much, we only have so many resources. And I have every confidence in our city manager and our department heads to allocate those resources appropriately, and we've sort of come up with some other things, the demand resources and. And I absolutely trust our team to make those decisions and deploy all the resources we have, which I know they'll all be available, those that are able to be on duty to help in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, all right, one more thing, go ahead.
Sorry, one thing I forgot to mention. I would like to request that, I can't make a motion to this, that we close the sidewalks on Ocean Avenue, but I would like to request that you monitor that closely, and that if we find that it is, especially if we're closing the boardwalks on the peninsula and on the island, that if we get the large crowds that we had last weekend, that we consider also closing the sidewalks on Ocean Boulevard above the beach. Because that's the same exact problem that we have on the other two.
All right. I just wanted to highlight something real quickly, that, I mean, this is ever-changing, sometimes by the hour. So I just want to point out, this afternoon, the Coastal Commission finally sent out guidance on what is required and what the standards are for closing things within the coastal zone. So I just, I'm going to read it real quick, because it literally came out this afternoon, and we are going to put in an application for everything that we've been doing already. But it says, and I'm going to, I'll just speak quickly. "Given the recent events, the executive director is prepared to waive permitting requirements for restrictions or closures where the restriction or closure is not longer than the duration of the applicable shelter-in-place order. It is the minimum action necessary to protect public health and safety, and it does not involve the erection of any permanent structures. Any such waivers will expire automatically when applicable shelter-in-place orders are lifted. At the same time, and because recreational beach and coastal access also play important roles in maintaining mental and emotional health, especially during times of stress, public agencies and local governments should strongly consider maintaining access to such public spaces where recreational users are practicing safe social distancing, and there's no obvious increased risk to public health, or if other measures are deemed sufficient in a given area. We recognize there is iniquity in coastal access, and we strongly encourage local governments to consider approaches that balance public health order requirements and equitable public access. The coast belongs to us all." That came out this afternoon. There is an application that goes along with it. We will be filing an application for the closures we've already listed, but it strikes me that, given how high a bar some of that language is, that what we need to do is, we need to see how the, which we, we have done a lot since last weekend in terms of closing a lot of places. We probably need to see how some of that goes before we can apply for more restrictive. But I'm just, I want to point out that we are, we are, it's, the law, the legal landscape does, is constantly changing. So we are going to be putting in applications, certainly, and I don't, I certainly hope they are not rejected. Ms. Dixon?
A couple of points of clarification. First of all, what the Coastal Commission just stated is in conflict with the governor's order. The governor says, "Stay in your neighborhood. If you don't live in the neighborhood, you are-"
That's not what the governor's order says. But go ahead.
Oh, he didn't say, "Do not," he said, "Stay in your home," or stay. I thought it was the stay. What did, what was the governor's order?
Yeah, I think it's very important to see what the actual executive order is, and I don't think it specifically calls out to stay in your, in your community in that. I think there's a-
Okay, but he speaks that, but all right, if, anyway. So let me just clarify what you said, Mr. Mayor, that you're saying that we should not implement the items that we've been discussing until we issue a permit application?
Oh, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm listing out what the Coastal Commission sent out today, and so the standards are probably higher than I would have expected them to be. But we are putting in applications, and so just, I just want to point out that that's, I think that cities that have just gone aggressive right off the bat, and we have some of them around us, are maybe going to face a difficult application process, whereas what I think we've done so far is, should probably be, is certainly incrementally approved.
Right, and one of the provisions you read was that it would not extend beyond the period of which that we are in, this period of stay-at-home, or whatever it's called. So clearly, it would not extend, and we're talking about one weekend, frankly. So I just want to clarify, are we, is the city manager authorized to proceed in that direction?
Well, I don't, we can't make a unanimous decision, or any kind of decision at the dais on what the city manager authorized to do beyond what we've already authorized you to do.
All right, that's fine, then I accept that.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Brenner?
Could I just say that I think the fact that we're keeping our beaches open would be in our favor? And if we need to, we can show pictures of people on our sidewalks and boardwalks coming practically face-to-face. So I do think that we've got some ammunition that we can use in that regard, if necessary.
Yep, understood. I wanted to just point out that we had finally received guidance, and that's what it was.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, so without any further questions, we are going to go out to the members of public, and then I'll bring it back for any closing comments anyone would like to make. All right, on this item, do we have any public comments?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council-
I'll tell you what, Jim, you're the last speaker tonight. Come on forward, and we'll clean it later.
Thank you. I have three comments. First of all, as you all know, the city has an emergency operation plan, which anticipated many possibly emergencies. A pandemic was not one of them. In our emergency operation plan, the city manager is designated as our emergency director, I believe is the title, with rather sweeping powers in the event of an emergency. It would be good for all of us to know who has been appointed as the deputy emergency director, should there become a need for the deputy director to step in. The second comment I have is about the governor's order and our interpretation of that. As you pointed out, Mr. O'Neill, at the special meeting, we are not health experts, nor probably is the Coastal Commission a health expert. And I would hope, before closing public streets, making them accessible to residents only, that the city manager would be looking for a direction from, more clear direction from health authorities that do know the health risk of that. And I have another second part to that comment about the governor's order, which is kind of personal to me. Seniors at least got a very mixed message from the governor. One, we're supposed to stay in our homes. But number two, we're not supposed to give up exercise. We're supposed to go out, we're supposed to go on walks, we're supposed to take bicycle rides and breathe some fresh air, is I believe what he said. Not in the order, but it was in his comments about his order. I failed myself at that this afternoon with a five-mile bike ride here, which I thought was refreshing. So my question is, there is a contradiction in that, we're supposed to stay at home, in our house, but we're supposed to go out also. I'm wondering if anybody in here knows, and perhaps, again, we're not health officials, is there now, or do we expect later, to be a possibility that there's actually a danger in breathing the fresh air outside as long as we keep our six feet, or maybe 20 feet, from other people? I personally do not know. And then the final comment I wanted to make, kind of amplifying Mr. Klob's comment on non-agenda items earlier, as to the conduct of council meetings, should the orders from the health departments become more severe than they are now, and more of the council members have, or think they need to participate by telephone? It's interesting to note that when the Brown Act first allowed remote meetings, it actually, many years ago, many decades ago, allowed that only for video conferencing. To have an effective meeting, it's really important for people to be able to see each other, to see the expression of the speakers, to interact in person. And it's kind of odd that that was amended to actually allow telephone participation in meetings without the video aspect of it. I think you can appreciate, just hearing disembodied voices is not a very good way to hold a meeting. So I am hoping we can find some technology, if things get to that point, that everybody will be able to see everybody else, not just their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back up, and I'll go through each person to make sure that if you have any final questions or comments, that you have the opportunity. So, Mr. Hurdman?
No, I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dixon?
Just to, again, thank staff and encourage staff's continued hard work and diligence, and keep communicating. Thank you. It's for you, Mr. Pope.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon? Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I wanted to ask, well, first of all, Laura Oatman, from Congressman Harley Ruda's office, had wanted to be here this evening, but she could not be. But she asked me to let people know that, especially if they have questions about the Small Business Administration, questions that their office could be helpful with, to contact her, and her email address is laura dot oatman, O-A-T-M-A-N, at mail, M-A-I-L dot house, H-O-U-S-E dot G-O-V, gov. And she also has a flyer that she can send you that has best websites to go to for the most accurate information. And in that regard, I had asked Grace, I'm wondering if we're able to put anything together with the best contact? I was expressing that I sometimes don't get all of the messages from the city. I rely on Will's Twitter account mostly to get my information about the city. So is there something we can give to people that gives them how to get listed on the appropriate places so that they can get all the information we're sending out directly?
Through our website, Leilani, can we put up this slide that's on here? Thank you. There's e-notifications that you can sign up for, so that when we have things posted specifically to the COVID-19 response and action items we're taking, that people can sign up for and get alerts through that. And I would really encourage keeping on our website, because we have it on our front, our front page on that, the splash page right there, and an easy link to it with the COVID-19 from our website. So I'd really encourage that. And I'll just note that, you know, when we're continuing our signage too, throughout in the city, we've placed them on some of the boardwalk areas and kind of heavy pedestrian traffic areas is the social distancing. So we'll continue to increase that signage as well around the city.
All right, that would be really helpful. And then, let's see, I had a couple other things. We have not talked tonight about short-term vacation rentals, and we have gotten a lot of complaints from people in the city because they're having visitors from out of town that are coming in and occupying the places next door to them, sometimes two to three groups per week, normally. Now, we have been told, Carol Jacobs from our city staff did a survey and has been communicating with people who have those licenses, and we're hearing that reservations are down like by 90%. That most of the people that have these are canceling, but we're still getting complaints from some people. Could you just address what we can do and what we can't do under those circumstances?
Sure, we did have, our assistant city manager, Carol Jacobs, did reach out proactively to our, all our property management companies, and also to our, the web platforms as well. But particularly for our property management companies, we had them reach out to their renters and to themselves of making sure we're enforcing that social distancing, and really encouraging, you know, for those activities, you know, to be postponed perhaps on the trips. And in those contacts with property owners, we're finding 90-plus percent of rental units actually, of the rentals, being canceled or postponed. So I think that's going to continue to drop down. But to the extent that we're seeing still issues or concerns on specific properties, we do have our community development code enforcement team going out and being more proactive with those types of units. And certainly with the, with all the mandates in place now, to the extent we're finding that the renters are not being able to abide by that. For example, if they have large group multifamilies, which they really shouldn't, then we're really going to be on top of addressing that with a property owner to have that addressed with the renters. And if they cannot do that, then we'll look to revoke that particular permit for those, for those homes. So really weed out the bad apples, if you will, or the ones who aren't able to, you know, ensure the safety.
Once again, we're relying on you, Grace, and on city staff, and you guys are doing a great job. We know what a burden this is and how challenging the times are, and we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duffield, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Avery. All right, then I have just a few quick notes. We've received a handful of comments that they're not receiving enough communication. I'll just say real quickly, every time I receive that, I've sent them every social media and our city's website. I mean, I've sent links to everything our city is putting out, and they're putting out a lot, and they're putting out even more lately. So by all means, please do go to our city website, sign up for notifications, go, sign on to the city Twitter account specifically, get your information from the city Twitter account. Health-related, I'll just echo Chief Lewis's comments. Figure out what you're going to trust, and trust those. I would really strongly recommend that you trust that FEMA website, trust HHS, trust CDC. State-level, go ahead and get on the California Department of Public Health website, on their Twitter account, get information from them. Locally, Orange County Healthcare Agency is doing a good job on getting information out, and HOG also. Definitely follow HOG. They're doing a great job with their communication. And the city, I know, is talking daily, and I'm talking almost every other day with folks at HOG too. For our business communities, tonight, restaurants, great American takeout. So tonight, go get takeout. You know, yeah, tonight, every night, yeah. But certainly tonight, I know I'm actually, I'm going to go pick up food from Mayor's Table after this, and then-
You can just like, don't get the picture.
And then, no, no, you're not allowed inside. So then the, and then I'll just say one last thing. I hope this kind of goes without saying, but I'll just say, everybody's stressed out right now. This is a lot for everyone. We've got a lot of, a lot of single parents with kids at home right now. We've got a lot of people losing their jobs. We've got a lot of people looking at their 401Ks and just having panic attacks. There's a lot going on, and what you can control is treating everyone with respect. By all means, treat your neighbors with respect. If you're going to reach out to us, I would just encourage you, even if you're disagreeing with us, it'd be great to just treat us with respect. And I would just note that before you hit send on any email, anytime you're posting on Nextdoor, anytime you're posting on Facebook, just ask yourself, "Are you helping or are you hurting?" Because we're either going to rise through this together, or we're going to fall, we're going to fall apart. And I really believe that, and we're a better city than I think, than would ever allow for us to fall apart. So with that, I want to say thank you to our staff, thank you to our council for riding this through. We're going to keep going through and get through this together. Madam Clerk, motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, anyone? All right, Mr. Hurdman, Mr. Duffield?
None for me.
None for me.
All right, thank you. I'll just note real briefly, we were planning on adjourning in the memory of Bill Moses tonight. After Mr. Duffield spoke with people close to Bill, we're going to push this until things feel more regular again. So with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.